I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for Wednesday, September 4th. If the clerk could please call the rule.
Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
He's downstairs.
Yep, he's.
Muncie?
Banton?
Here.
White?
Here.
Give a forum.
Councilmember Muncie had sent me a text message that he has a work meeting, so he won't be here today. And I assume that Russ will be on his way up shortly. Any agenda changes, additions or deletions to the agenda today? Okay, any guest speakers? Public comment on agenda items only, if anybody would like to speak on agenda items only.
Hi, Christine Murphy Pierce, 449 Water Street and 121 Mary Street. Speaking on agenda item of Republic Services. I noticed I didn't, I didn't get a survey. So I have a question if businesses got the survey of what is happening with Republic would be my first question. Second, that I think businesses should be included in how we're going on with our trash pickup. And I think the city should be more aware of, of having, because we have to push our trash cans out to the street. So I think that looks horrible. And then usually in the past, we've always had pickups on holidays. No matter when the holiday falls, we would have a pickup on the Fourth of July. We would have a pickup. It was always in the contract because we, we have so much trash. And I'm paying about $3,000 a month in trash. So I think that needs to go into consideration of me as a business not being able to shop that number around. I don't really have a huge problem with Republic as a whatever, it's fine. But it is a larger company, so they aren't servicing Sagatuck like it used to, which I'm sure that another company will come in. It will just be bigger or whatever. But I think if it's an exclusive, then they need to bend for us a little too. So with that being said, I don't know if the businesses were in the survey. I don't know if anyone can answer that question or how this, you know, however that goes. Because I wasn't aware that there was a survey going around regarding the trash. Because I'm, I probably call Republic three times a week. Because a missed pickup or the driver didn't want to get out of the car or get out of the truck. Because maybe there was a car kind of in the way. So they're very, very particular about it. Also, a lot of businesses do not do trash pickup. They use the public ones on the street. Most of the shops on Water Street will walk their trash to the public ones and put them in the city ones. So there's like, I'm taking on a big, you know, because I have to, I'm a restaurant or whatever. So, but I just want to be aware that those little shop owners, they use the public, the city ones. So they just, and they don't have a lot, so that's fine. It's not like it's making a big mound or anything like that. They push it down, not saying it looks bad or whatever. But I think the trash needs to be a collective discussion of how it's going to move forward. And because it is really gross on some nights, if you drive through at night. Or if you come down early, early in the morning, there's trash every, you know, there's not trash everywhere. We're not Chicago. But I don't, I just pushed mine out on Monday, on Sunday night, hoping that maybe they were going to pick up. They didn't pick up, so then I have to push them back in. So I feel as an exclusive, that's, and I'm paying them, and I'm the business owner that's paying the money. I don't know what benefit we're getting for an exclusive. So I guess I would just like to know as an exclusive contract with this, with Republic, what are we getting with that? So that was my discussion on that.
Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
Anyone online wishing to speak on agenda items only, if you could raise your hand, please? Okay. I don't see anyone with a hand raised. So we'll move right along then to the discussion items with item 6A, the rate proposal from Republic Services.
Yes, madam, here, so. So good comments here for us to discuss. So the existing agreement with Republic is set to expire at the end of the month. This single hauler agreement goes back to 2008. They're the designated contractor for perform certain waste services. This really relates to like residential service as a, as a single hauler, not necessarily businesses. So for residential customers, we have a single hauler agreement. It started with Chef Container back in 2008. Eventually Chef Container sold to Republic, and so Republic kind of picked up that service. So as we discussed this earlier this year, we kind of had some discussion about, you know, should we go out for bids? Should we negotiate an extension? We talked about the fact that Douglas back in 2022 went out for bids and that Republic was the low bidder by far. The council had some discussion and kind of wanted to do a survey to, you know, see what, what, what the feedback was on, on current services. And so we sent that survey out via our e-news blast and received 159 responses. It covered both trash and recycling. What we found was that it relates to a trash service. I think the, the results were pretty favorable, that 70% of the respondents were either very satisfied or satisfied with their current trash collection services. 12% were neutral. They made 18% that were dissatisfied. The comments as it related to recycling services, you know, the results are in your packet. Definitely wanted, you know, more frequent recycling pickups was the biggest ask by far. So based on, you know, those, their survey results and knowing kind of the experience that Douglas had recently had. We reached out to Republic, staff reached out to Republic to, to get some, get a proposal. One, we went through the, the survey results, but two, we, we, you know, asked for a rate extension proposal. So Republic is indicating that they have no concerns with providing increased recycling pickup. They don't offer anything more than bimonthly, but they're willing to go from monthly to bimonthly to increase that service. They don't offer composting options. Unfortunately, I know that was brought up as a request. I know, you know, the Rotary and our partners and our other municipalities have partnered on a household hazardous waste disposal day. That's something that the Douglas, they charged the Douglas customers a certain amount for that. And, and, and Republic offers an annual household hazardous waste day, but it's in Holland. So there'd be a kind of a greater distance that would have to be traveled there. And, you know, if every customer is being charged, are they really getting the benefit out of that? So I'm not, I told my, I told off on that at this point. I think the county recently offered a, an option to county residents and hopefully we'll continue that, that option as well. So Republic has provided their, their rate proposal. Essentially coming in at $20.50 per residential customer, residential pickup. This would include recycling. And there's a typo there, it's actually not 28% higher, it's actually 43% higher than their, their current rate amount. But again, that would include more frequent recycling pickup. Our previous five-year agreement with them had us at three and a half percent increases per year. This proposal has the rate increases per year at 6%. The proposed rate is $2 higher per month than the rates Douglas is, is going into here into year three for them. However, looking at the proposed rate from Republic compared to the bid rate that Douglas received a couple of years ago from Arrowways, was, which was the only other bidder, that combined rate for trash and recycling was 26, 25 per month. So still substantially lower, but you know, we're still, you know, they're still looking at charging us a bit more than Douglas. And then rear yard service, which is a service that they'll go and grab your cart, walk it to the truck and then walk it back to its, its location. They are indicating that that price will go up from $15 a month to $20. So I met with Republic last week and kind of expressed, I, you know, some concerns that I had with paying more, at least to what Douglas is at for similar services. From their perspective, they're, they're firm on their, their rate offer. You know, they're indicating that the, the market can probably bear more than that if we were to go out to bids, that these rates would go away. And they probably would, would bid a higher amount. And obviously they saw the Arrow Waste bid amount from a couple of years ago. They're, they're aware of that, they were in that process. From their perspective, you know, given the high inflationary environment, eventually they're like, Douglas is going to also kind of have some catch-up to do as well. Although Douglas is at 5% increases per year, so I had some discussion with them about the fact that a little bit more of that has been made up over time with Douglas in the last few years than maybe what it has been with us. But that I, I still felt we should be a little closer to that. But all of that to say, they're, they're firm on their, their rate offer. This is what they're willing to offer us. Right side, we are looking at higher or a greater recycling frequency. But wanted to bring it to council and see if you had any feedback. We can go from there.
Well, it's not great.
It's not, I agree.
I feel like if it were to go out to bid and we were to have Arrow Waste, or I don't know that there's even anyone else that could bid this. They are indicating that they might go higher than that, than what they're offering us at this point.
Yeah, I mean essentially, yeah, Republic's indicating that this is a, you know, they're offered to extend our current agreement as a current customer. But that if we were to bid it out, you know, they're not guaranteeing that they would bid these rates. They think that the market can actually bear more, a higher increase. You know, I have had discussions with, you know, reaching for the township, they don't have a single hauler contract. So they weren't aware, I guess where all their, their customers are at out, out there. I talked, reached out to Fenville as well. They're also not on a single hauler. So we had a little bit of discussion about, you know, eventually it'd be nice if everybody maybe were and we could combine forces. And, you know, we're, we're a small customer in a, in a pond of a lot of customers across the country. And so our negotiating power isn't as great, unfortunately. But, so we talked about the fact that, you know, maybe at some point we could, you know, do some sort of joint bidding or something like that if we got to that, that point. You know, one option we have, we don't have to necessarily, you know, extend something for five years. We could choose to do three and request an option for another year or two, or we simply could ask for just three years and see where we're at, see where everybody else is at. Douglas is going into year three and my understanding is they have an option for an additional two years. So they might be another three years on their contract, so.
So I definitely think we should see if we can negotiate a fewer years on the contract because we're not real happy with what they're offering.
Yeah. So if we can sync up with them and have a conversation as we go forward to increase.
That would be ideal.
To increase our bargaining.
Yeah.
I mean, this does answer, I think, you know, the number one issue around waste.
Recycling.
So it, it does answer that, but yeah, you know. I'm probably getting convinced to be limited given our size. So, yeah, you get to find a way to sync us up with Douglas and, you know, start having that conversation.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, I live in on River West. They pick up the same time they walk, go through my neighborhood and then they go right into Douglas's neighborhood. So they're treating us like one entity anyways, there's no reason we shouldn't be bargaining as such. So absolutely agree with that.
So we have a single hauler system for residential, is that the same for businesses?
I believe we have any limitation on, I can double check this, but any?
That would be good to know.
Any? Not aware of one for businesses. So my understanding is that the single hauler, otherwise we'd be negotiating rates for businesses in this agreement. I mean, this is a residential related agreement. And I, trust me, I, I hear the concerns about the, the trash rates and things like that too, and the amount of trash. I, I.
So I.
We pay for it too, because we collect all the trash downtown and we use Republic and we have to pay for it to haul it away as a, as a city. And we have Republic right now as well, so.
So if businesses wanted to negotiate with a different service, could they?
You know, I'll double check that there's not something I'm, I'm missing or not aware of in our ordinances or, you know, but that is, that is my understanding. This is related to residential pickup.
There's no business rates in here, so.
Right.
That speaks to that in my mind.
Right, and there weren't in the prior agreement either, so.
Okay.
It, it would be great. I mean, the more we can expand the negotiation pool, I think, you know, if we can help businesses get better rates. And especially with Douglas and even, you know, the township in Fenville. It seems like the more we can aggregate our buying power, that would, I would be all for that.
So, so the rate that's being proposed, the year one rate of 2050 would be 28.3% higher than current rates.
43%, that's my 43% higher.
Oh, okay. But the rate itself, the 2050, I'm just looking at my own bill right online, 6741 for three months. So that works out to 22 bucks and change a month. So does that mean that the rate that, is it? I, I, I'm not understanding the rate proposal.
So the rate, that rate relates to picking up the trash and the recycling?
Correct, but mine's already at 2247. So the year one rate of 2050 would be 28.3%. So that's monthly.
Do you have any other like?
We have, we have two recycling carts and one, one trash cart.
You pay more for the two.
Yeah, you may pay, pay more for your extra recycling carts.
Yeah. But the year one rate of 2050, so in other words, that rate's lower than when I'm, even if you take out the extra cart, that's about where I am. And I know what the extra cart adds in my.
So you should be right now at. You know what?
Is that confusing anybody else in terms of the rate?
I think that we're paying, I think we pay more even for one recycle cart, you know, and then, because we, I'm, I'm with you, I have two recycle carts. But I think we have to pay for even one. I think this is just trash only, that the $20 is the way I understood it. I think if you want a recycle cart, you pay for that already.
All right, so my, okay, my number was correct. It was 28%, a 28% increase. My mistake, I was looking at the 32 gallon weekly. So I don't think anybody else is on that anymore. So the current rates that are showing on the screen right now, if you look at the 96 gallon containers that are out there, you're paying 1597 for those. So what they should be charging you, because that's the rate that's negotiated. Now, if there's extra carts and, or pickups that you're doing, there may be extras that you're paying for. If you're paying for their yard waste service.
Yeah, which I'm not. So my cart rate, that 1596 is going to go up to 2050. You're saying.
Correct.
Okay. And then that's going to be subject to a yearly increase of 6%, flat 6%. So not tied to any kind of CPI or any flat 6%.
Correct, so their, their argument is that our previous five-year agreement was three and a half percent increases. And their argument is that, well, we lost on that because, you know, inflation was much higher in those, that, that period of time. And so they're anticipating higher costs for the next several years and they think that we should pay 6%. I told them that I didn't entirely agree with that and we had some discussion about that, so. And I, I think that maybe they, you know, maybe they're willing to come down a slight bit, but I don't think it's going to be a lot on that.
Yeah, over the last four years, averaged five, but that's a historically high inflation environment, so.
I hear you.
I'm not thrilled with a 6% baked in. I mean, we're at 2.9 right now.
Does that allow them to, and I didn't read the contract in detail, does it also allow them to put a surcharge? For instance, say, oh, sometimes they put fuel surcharges onto the bills when they've experienced like inflation, excessive inflation on fuel rates? Because that's their main cost.
This, they say this bid is based on a force of 5%.
So they, so does the contract allow them the, the ability to add a surcharge at their discretion, not only with the city?
So that fuel surcharge was on the last set of rates?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying, because I know I, we see that on our commercial rates for the trash that we haul out of our parks and everything like, like that. So I'll have to ask about any fuel pieces. I don't think in the current agreement, I'll have to look back at the language, I guess I don't want them to speak, so.
I personally will not agree to the 6%. I think this should be tied to CPI.
Yeah.
That's a standard that most folks follow. You know, from my perspective, really the issue I've heard is the recycling frequency that's being addressed here, two is the noise. And again, that's something that's been a constant issue here. I mean, you've got it with food trucks, you've got it with anybody that brings services to our town. You don't want it late enough in the morning that it disrupts people who are visiting, but also you don't want it early enough that it's going to wake people up from sleep, right? The same, the same idea can, can be made with the city's DPW, right, with street cleaning and so forth. This is, it's all utility vehicles and commercial vehicles. So I don't know if there's been any, I don't recall if there was any limitation on Republic's ability to actually collect only certain hours.
There are, yeah, yep.
I just prefer them to go through town when it's not jam-packed with people. Like, the earlier the better, get in and out of here.
And it's a real struggle because you all, I, I mean, there's a lot of vehicles that come into this town, you know, service our businesses and, and residents. And to try to, you know, fit them into a two-hour window in the morning, it, it's a challenge. It's a real challenge. But from my perspective, I've not heard anybody that has made any comment to me personally about the rate. It's been about the level of service. And it's been about the response to, the response from Republic. You know, when Chef went and was owned locally, you know, by, by Mr. Steele, it was a different operation. So I don't, I don't compare Chef against Republic because Republic's a national, you know, conglomerate. But my experience with Republic has been that when I've had an issue, which has not been often, is they've been responsive. And I also appreciate the fact that I get a phone call from them telling me when service is going to be delayed. So they seem to do at least a minimal job to keep me informed as an end user. Other than that, I have not had any issues with, when we had a cart that was, that was broken, called them up and they had a cart there within, I think, three days. So from a service standpoint, other than recycling, I've not heard any issues and have no one said any issue about costs, at least from residential. That's kind of been my experience.
As business owner, we pay out the wazoo and they miss pickups all the time. But that's just, that's just the name of the game when it comes to business, I swear. It just, it happens when we're overflowing. They miss pickups a lot, but, you know, what can you do? And there's not a lot of choices.
So for me personally, if I go to two times a month and I'll get rid of my second cart and save myself a couple bucks.
Right. Yeah.
Question, is there a limit to how many trash cans you can purchase like or pay rent on? No, not that I'm aware of, okay.
Get a little side hustle going.
Collect Christine's garbage.
That's right. Shop owners downtown.
No doubt.
And you do, I mean, there are limits on, you know, you have to have the screen and things like that, so that might provide some natural limitations, but. Yeah, and I, you know, so the next step really, I mean, I, I'm going to go back to Republic with some of the feedback that I heard today to see what they're willing to do. What are, what we'd like to see. The, the agreement has had a number of extensions, so I'd, I'd like to make sure we have good, clean copy. It does cover the hours that they can pick up and things like that. I haven't heard of, you know, a ton of issues with that or anything like that. But, you know, we won't have this on your agenda for Monday, but we'll work on continued rate discussions and then bring back the entire agreement with extension and propose their, you know, final proposed rates, probably your, your next regular meeting. But maybe we'll workshop it again to see if you can take a look. Maybe your next workshop we'll do that and then that works for you. Well, I think we, yeah, we. Well, I don't know that they're going to be willing to extend it past then if they have, you know, rates to us and we're working through it. But I think we can, we still have another workshop opportunity and regular meeting before we have to make a decision, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the item 6B, proposed tri-community wildlife committee.
Yeah, so, you know, we've, from a staff perspective, I've received, you know, some, some complaints about deer. We've heard it on, on, you know, east side of the river, the west side of the river, from folks that own, you know, more land and those that own less land. So this concerns with deer and, you know, some of the behaviors that they've had with not being afraid of folks and kind of walking down the middle of the streets and sidewalks and eating vegetation. And, and then I, you know, recently met with Oxbow, who's expressed a lot of concerns with the fact that there's really no, you know, understory at Talmage Woods and that that's what we need to have a sustainable forest, you know, going forward. So around this time, I, I, you know, I discussed that, you know, with, with the mayor and Mayor Potem during our, our weekly meeting. And, and, and I'm aware that Douglas had done, I think, a call last year and had taken a look at this. And we had discussion about the fact that, you know, we can't just look at this in isolation. This is kind of a, a greater issue, you know, that we need to maybe look at what our, our partnering communities are doing. And I didn't even get a chance to email Douglas. They had already reached out to me and said, hey, you know, we, we're interested in kind of a tri-community wildlife committee. Would you be on board? And they emailed the township as well, and all three of us managers at least felt that, you know, this was a, a good thing to move forward with. So Douglas kind of put together this, set up proposed kind of board bylaws or, or rules of procedure. Their council, I believe, last night did approve moving forward, you know. You know, assuming that, that Douglas, or I'm sorry, that us and the township agreed to, to move forward as well. So I wanted to bring it forth to council to see what your thoughts are and, and maybe vote on creating this committee.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I'm 100% on board on this. I don't know if my aunt would be interested in serving on this. She's the one that came to the meeting and made comment about her issues. And I've had, at least one person has emailed me personally and said in support of this. However, I would suggest that this be a task force like we did with, like the short-term rentals. I think another standing committee of the council, I think, will be just additional responsibility for the city staff to have to manage. My experiences with situations like this is that we form a task force to take a mission forward with a end date and come back with a suggested list of things. And again, it could be community-wide. I, I completely agree with the township and the village of Douglas and the city being, being collaborative on this. But I think a task force would be better suited to the, because it really is about the deer. I'm not aware of any other wildlife problems necessarily, at least in the city of Sagatuck. I just think it's, that would be a more focused effort and I think get the results that we're really looking for together.
We have had the beaver. There is a beaver as well. Few times. Which was a popular presence.
So Douglas has proposed this committee. Did they select somebody to be on their committee from council?
I think I got an email from Lisa today, I do not, I haven't looked at it, so.
So council participation, city manager participation, and then resident? I mean, so what is the, one thing that concerns me about council participation is it changes enough that this seems like a longer term issue, so ensuring we have continuity?
It's going to be an issue because there are very different opinions. I would urge everybody in the council just to read up on processes that city may have.
Uh huh, right.
You know, people want to give the deer birth control. I have my, I have my own views, but I think they're probably different with some like council. And I have some of my counterparts who work in Douglas, so.
And they have to operate under, you know, what the DNR is going to allow. You don't just get to make decisions about what you're going to do in a, in a vacuum, so.
That as well, but I mean, it's, it's going to be unpopular with some people in, in all of us. You know, the reality of my view is they're going to be called by their marksman or through, through a managed archery, which will make some a little bit strange. But I mean, still in bylaw, because there are any natural predators that are managing.
I'm in support of the concept, 100%. I'm not supportive of the committee approach. I don't think the council needs another committee for this. I think a task force would be, would be the ideal approach because then.
The difference between the.
Because then they make a recommendation of things that the city can do, or the township, or the village of Douglas can do, to manage. Because the solution may be different depending on, on where you are. But this pushes responsibility down to a committee level that ultimately I think us as the elected council has responsibility for, for making a policy decision about what's best for the city of Sagatuck in relation to the other.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. What, I, I don't know the difference between a committee and a, and a task force.
A task force, similar to short-term rental, task force has a very specific purpose, to come back with a report on what actions are needed.
Put in a committee too?
But the, the committee in this, in this particular proposal is a continuing.
I don't think it's intended to be that. I mean, the discussions that, that the managers had were, were that, yeah, this group would meet and come up with, it's a recommending body, has no, you know, powers or authority. It's there to come up with a set of recommendations and then send back to the township board and the Douglas and Sagatuck City Council. So they're not making any ultimate decisions for you. They're just coming up with a set of recommendations and that, at that point, you know, we'll have to evaluate, okay.
Right.
Does, does each board want them to do a little bit more work or the dive in, you know, to, to want them to just kind of exist for a period of time to see how things go? Or do you want to dissolve it at that time? I mean, you certainly could make that decision at the time. The intent though is for this to be a, you know, an actual initiative. The initial proposal was that this be some sort of like authority or something like that. And I think both the township and I agreed, and I think, you know, Lisa and the. Lisa in the end as well, that we don't need another authority or longstanding committee, but that we think it has a purpose for a period of time and, you know, go up with some initial set of recommendations and then we'll come reevaluate.
What if you were to make the committee with a sunset date?
You can, if that's what you, you ultimately want to do, um.
You know, come back with a recommendation to the respective municipalities by, I don't know, December thirty first or whatever the day is going to be. But then the committee ceases to exist after that point unless the individual municipalities choose to extend its life.
Yeah, you absolutely could do that. I think you did something similar to that with recycling committee.
So my question is, um, with Douglas, uh, did they select a city council member to be on that group?
Yes.
About what they're expecting of us as well to have somebody from city council be on that committee?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be, uh, so they did, yes, they selected a city council member, Neil Seabert.
Okay.
Um, as their kind of, as they put it, their city's elected representative. So it seems like that's kind of their intent. And I think that's wise because that council member can be reporting back to, we can add this as part of your regular meeting agendas.
Is there anyone who would like to be on that committee that is here right now? I already know this one does not want to be involved and that's absolutely okay.
I like about you, uh, doing it is I think you appreciate sort of the, well, the complexity, but it's a real environmental issue now. The, um, the kind of, it's really degrading our forests.
It's been a problem for a long time, but it's just getting worse. I know we planted, tried to plant a bunch of trees on Mount Balded a few years ago and deer just smoked all the saplings, just ate them all.
I don't, I don't know Neil, I don't know Neil that well, but I
I appreciate you being willing.
Education, beer education.
Any effort like this has to begin with problem definition, which I think is pretty straightforward. Solutions, there's a number of them, calling being one of them, and there are several others. And that's what I would ask the group to be very, you know, focused on. And I'd be more interested in making sure we have a timeline saying, we expect to report back from this study group task force, whatever we call it, by X date. I, I, I mean, we're not, we're not trotting new ground here. So there's a lot of resources available at the state, uh, to, you know, assist with this or provide guidance on what other communities have done. It's a matter of us coming back with some sort, with, with some options and the council ultimately has to make the decision.
I mean, how do, how do you all feel about just getting it done and spending the money or trying to have this be a revenue generator? People would pay a lot to harvest some of these years with a special archery program. Lake Town Township does, I believe it's over by the Barry Farm in Lake Town where it's a lot.
I think this is all for you and your committee to come up with, darling. I don't want anything to do with any of this.
Doesn't eat humans.
But I'd do that for Friday, the deer.
But yeah, Scott, if you're willing to be a part of it, I, I really appreciate it because something needs to happen and I really appreciate you, uh, taking the opportunity to be a part of that. Okay, all right.
So we'll add that to the sample motion Monday to appoint Mr. Dean and then, um.
You need to have figured out?
I mean, if there's a certain date that you're at wanting it to like sunset by, I mean, you could also make that as part of your motion on Monday as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's important just because it demonstrates to the community that there's a focused effort to come back with solutions for this to get. Well.
I mean, we're looking for a solution by this fall, I would assume.
Constant.
Yeah, it's, it's going to have to be a collaborative approach because frankly, and I'm sure you can do a call in the city of Sagatuck because of the, just the residential nature of the city. Just in my experience, it would have to be something we've done in a larger landmass like in the township or in the village, which has open, more open space. And quite frankly, most of the deer that are coming here are coming in from the township or coming in. Nothing against the city or the village, but there's probably more deer that are actually, you know, whatever they do at night, you know, as they rest at night, they're probably not resting here in the city. They're probably somewhere out. So anyway, this, you know, this is kind of the thing, it, it has to be a collaborative effort because the solution might not necessarily be necessarily a call within the city of Sagatuck, maybe a call in which the city of Douglas has already tried. The township, I don't believe is making, made any effort yet, collective effort on this, but so anyway, just I'll leave it at that.
And I'm sure the committee will go through a lot of this, but not feeding the deer would be helpful, you know, let alone, you know, different plantings that can help and. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks, Scott. All right. Moving on then to item six C, the agreement, uh, for the water and sewer agreement and the consulting services. It's on page twenty. Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I'm sure all of you probably remember Andy Campbell, who helped us with our, um, evaluating and creating a, a water asset management plan and what we needed to set our, um, fees at, um, to, uh, replace a lot of our locally owned, uh, water assets. Uh, so Andy was with Baker Tilly. Um, he has since moved to a, a different firm. Um, Baker Tilly, uh, recognizing that Andy's been working with us for, for some time on, on our water, water asset management plans and also kind of reviewing, language, uh, and coming up with a potential plan for a, uh, new water operations agreement. Uh, Baker Tilly's indicated that they were willing to kind of waive his non-compete and, and terminate our agreement with them and, and not charge us for any of the time that, that Andy's actually provided under them. Uh, so Andy and his new firm have provided us with the, the same cost proposal that, uh, was provided under, under Baker Tilly. Um, where the, the township, the city and Douglas would, would share, uh, and Andy's, um, cost. We had a, actually a meeting, uh, today, uh, even before we have this approved, so he's counting on us, uh, moving forward with him and at least paying our portion. But, uh, we had a very good, I think, productive meeting, uh, this afternoon with, with Douglas and the township. Uh, and, and Andy and his expertise and reviewing our, uh, the drafts of the water operations agreement from Cal Lake, so.
Is there, is there any indication that, uh, the village or the township would not be, assuming they're going to be presented with the same?
Yeah, I think Douglas approved last night and I think the last email I saw from Daniel is, he was all good. So I don't know if he has to take it to his, his order not, or, or.
Yeah, I just don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to stick with the same horse in the race, right? Um, and so, and the fact that, uh, Baker Tilly's been, been gracious enough to allow him to waive his non-compete to work with us, I think is a good sign for Baker Tilly. It's a good sign for Andy and, um, what was her name, Brittany?
Brittany, yep.
Yeah, Brittany. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this.
Yep, agreed.
Yep, same. All right. Any other discussion? Great. That was easy one. Let's move on to six D, review of policy on ethical standards of conduct. It's on page twenty-five of your packet. Ryan, I know we, uh, discussed this back in July, was it?
Yeah. So last year, the, the council had a discussion in July of twenty twenty-three about the, reviewed the city's ethics policy. And at that time, uh, didn't, didn't feel that any changes were made. Mr. Mr. Witty was here and kind of presented on, um, you know, the last update was in two thousand eight and that's, um, they weren't necessarily seeing a need to have, you know, something extra, uh, or different. Uh, but you obviously defer to the council and you as, as our policymakers to, to have that discussion. So at that time, there was a, a discussion that, uh, not to make any changes. Council member, uh, Gardner and White have asked to kind of review, uh, again, so a copy of the, um, ethics policy and, uh, is in your, your packets. There was a, it seemed like a pretty substantial change from the two thousand four policy to the two thousand eight policy that essentially kind of shifted from a, uh, uh, separate administrative committee that was reviewing ethics complaints to really, um, relying upon the existing state laws as it related to ethics and, uh, relying upon those processes to, to handle future, uh, ethics complaints, um, with the thought that the council was more of a legislative body and really wasn't set up for quasi judicial reviews. Um, and also selected by a political process. And felt, you know, so that, that's what that, the policy spoke to at least at the time. Um, so I think it's probably ripe for your, uh, discussion and review if you want to make any changes.
And I know Chris is online right now as well. We have questions for him.
Yeah, just, uh, thanks for teeing that up, Ryan. Um, I, I just think as a comment on the city, as with any policy and procedure that we adopt as a city that we review it on a regular basis, even if no changes are anticipated. It, um, you know, I, I've got some personal, um, behaviors and things I've seen recently that lead me to believe that the city needs to get a little tighter on some personal codes of conduct and so forth for, for, for folks, um, as well as we need to be a bit more transparent when it comes to relationships and other things that I personally witnessed. And not that I'm looking for anybody in particular, I just think this is a good opportunity for collectively for us to look at and say, maybe they come back with no changes whatsoever, or maybe there's ways to, to address some situations that others may have been experiencing too. So I, I, I just think it's, I think it's good business and good government for us to just do this and not just with this, but with other policies, procedures that the city has on a, on a scheduled basis.
So what changes are you proposing that would be different from our current ethics policy?
What I would suggest we do is that we come up with a roadmap as a council to some of the, what we just did with the wildlife management and say, council agrees that we would have, whether it's a, you know, a s- small number of, you know, maybe with the city manager, a couple of council members to review and maybe make proposals back to the city council within ninety days for any updates or maybe no changes. Taking a look at all of the, there's a great handbook out there that MML actually publishes and has resources to assist cities and villages and townships that want to review and update.
I would be fine with not Chris, not Jay, but maybe Lizzie, our firms, you know, resources, the employment law attorney interface with the MML and see if there's any best practices that we should be adopting. But I don't believe any member of this council should touch it.
Right. Anyone else?
I think I actually, uh, in my past life, when I worked, um, or got paid for working, um, did some consulting with, um, AT&amp;T and Visa and a spinoff of, of Eli Lilly on ethics and compliance policies. Um, and I think I like Scott's approach. It's pretty standard. So I think having, um, somebody who knows how to do this and I would look to our, I mean, I think the attorneys are the place to start to look at best practices with MML. Um, I do think there's room in this policy to be a little clearer, um, and sort of, I don't really know what the administrative, refers to an administrative committee, um, and officers and executives, and I think we can probably be at least define terms better. Um, so I think we can tighten that a little bit. The other thing, um, and this is true in our HR policy too, I think it's sort of, we have diffuse, uh, kind of a diffuse, um, process for if somebody sees an issue. So it says any member, a member of council or, um, and I think we could spell out better for people like, um, you know, and what concerns me about any, you know, any member of council is it kind of keeps it a little loose. Um, so, and again, I would look to experts like, you know, our legal firm. But, you know, report it to, well, for staff, they would report it to their supervisor or the city manager. And if that doesn't work, then go to the city attorney, I would assume.
Yeah.
Um, involving council, go to the, you know, the mayor, um, just so that it's more specific. And it's sort of, I don't know if any of you studied sociology, but there's a famous case about a woman named Kitty Genovese who was being stabbed in New York City and nobody responded to her because her plea was sort of general instead of saying, you Logan, like catching Logan's eyes and say, I need you to help me. And so I think if we could build a little bit more of that, um, it helps people. One, I think it helps somebody who spots an issue feels like there's a tight process. And then it's harder for it to say, oh, well, I told so and so, or I told so and so. Um, so I do think that would be an area that, the other thing that a lot of companies do, and I know government's very different from, um, corporate stuff. But, um, it's routine for people to annually attest to a, um, an ethics policy or code of conduct. So you just, um, and this would apply, you know, both to staff and council. I mean, I think anything that applies to staff should apply to council where it's possible. But to just say, yep, I read it, um, I agree to abide by it. I think it's a way to keep it top of mind with folks. So I think that would be something we could consider. Yep.
When you see elected officials, all of your former presidents to representatives in state, in the state house, just to US senators, you know, elected by the people.
Right.
Uh, so to create a policy that has teeth, you basically need to demonstrate that something's broken along.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where I, my focus is, is I think we as a council have done a very good job, but whenever we've had, you know, human relations issue, we've brought a specialized labor employee to fold quickly. There's been numerous instances where it's happened before yours.
Right.
So I think that's very important. I do not think the council should have a very hands-on role, maybe a process if you're outlining a process.
Yes, process not, I mean, council shouldn't, I don't, I totally agree with you, council, we are not a judicial body. But I do think we could be tighter on the process if somebody sees something they think is unethical. Just spell it out. So you, you either go to this, you know, the city manager, the mayor or the city attorney. Um, and, and if you go to somebody else on council, then our obligation is to go to just to get the process started. Um.
I, I just fear based on what's happened. I've seen individuals over the years, I've seen people weaponize this kind of stuff. And that's like, so I really do think at least you're looking at independent.
Legal counsel, that is.
I, I really believe that when politicians start investigating, auditing and, and you'll, you see it, you see it on the news all the time. I don't really want to, you know, get involved in that as a council. I think it's wrong, I think it's not nice. I think it should be focused on our legal counsel, people that are specialists in legal counsel working with the MML to identify best practices. And if we need to update, then they can bring that to us. That's my focus.
So if I could just add real quick, I mean, so the, the minutes from last July stated that, you know, this legal council reviewed the city's ethics policy documentation from both two thousand four and two thousand eight. And that there were no red flags and nothing needed immediate attention. So I think our attorneys have at least conducted a fairly recent review and at that time didn't feel like there was any red flags. I know there's, I hear there's some, some concerns maybe that there needs to be some clarification around, uh, reporting processes and, and making the, those lines more clear. Um, so we can certainly have, you know, legal counsel take a specific look at, you know, that language and what that process looks like. Um.
I'm curious to know what deficiencies are seen by Mr. Garter, Mr. White to bring this as a line item. That's what I, I, I'm not clear on.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm going to, uh, to counter council member Dean's comment. I don't, I do not believe this is just simply a legal review. This is from the MML. This is from, um, it's all out on their website. This is from the MML. This is from, it's all out on their website, how to proceed ethics handbook for ethics policies or procedures. A study committee. A committee should be formed to review the initial draft of a post ethics ordinance, or in this case would be to looking at our current one, or to draft the ordinance in consultation with an eligible municipal attorney, to council member Dean's point. It is helpful to involve people with municipal experience, people with a legal background and people with broad experience in the community. It is helpful to include at least one elected official who serves in a legislative body and who is interested in the undertaking. This person may assist in formulating the ethics policy and also by endorsing and presenting the ordinance to the legislative body for adoption. And then it goes on into the actual process itself and the services that they offer and the resources that are available. That's right from the MML, a study committee. And so it's not just an individual, it's a group of people with the background that they suggest as to have a look at this.
Okay.
And, and I want to answer council member Baldwin's point. I don't necessarily see, personally see anything wrong per se, but I think it's just good government and good business practice for us to say, does the current policy reflect contemporary standards? And does it address any issues that others may have seen? I, I mean, to me, it's that simple.
Who would you suggest of this council be on the committee?
Would be interested in serving.
Oh, I would. Would you support me being on the committee?
You just signed up for the wildlife committee.
Yes, yes, yes or no? I mean, I'm, I'm willing to make hard decisions about the deer. Would you, would you support me being on the committee to go over the ethics policy?
That's a little confrontational, Mr. Dean.
I don't know about anyone else, but I feel that we have a policy. It, you know, it's been here for years. We relooked at it in July of, you know, 2023. It's sounding like that we need some clarification on processes. And that some of those could be tightened up and we could have our attorneys look at that in conjunction with, you know, the Michigan Municipal League, they could look at those and Lizzie could be, you know, taking a look at that and maybe clarify some of those things. Cause I'm, I feel like that's the one thing that we're asking is that it's a little bit more clear who, it should be more clear. You know, who you should go to if you feel like something is, you know, going wrong. And then going from there. And if you, if you don't feel like you're getting a response.
Then who to go.
Then who to go from there.
Relate it, yeah.
So I do feel like that could be a little bit more clear. And if that's something we could have our attorneys um, look at and maybe look at our policy and where things could be clarified. I just don't think we need a full committee to do this. But that's just, that's just my opinion.
Logan, what are your thoughts?
I'm a fan of reviewing. It's old. Things have changed. Take a look at it. It just seems like some nice housekeeping to do.
Is it something, I mean, that you think we need a committee to do or would you entrust ex, you know, our, our law firm with HR ethics things? Pardon?
Professional to take a look at that.
And, and again, this is not the, nothing against the attorneys, but I will also suggest as part of this process that the attorneys maybe ask individuals within the council or perhaps even within the city staff as to anything that they may have personally experienced or seen that, you know, could be improved. And I may, I'm, I have some suggestions, maybe others do as well. So I think that would be, because the independent study, which they did previously, didn't identify any red flags. But again, as it says right here in the MML guide, it needs to reflect what your community standard should be.
Yeah, I would say like if we're, you know, if the consensus is to at least have our city's kind of employment attorney that take a look at reporting processes and, and potential changes to that language. If any of you have feedback or something to pass along, then by all means, I mean, it's not that this is the only opportunity to provide feedback. So if you have feedback, then absolutely, I think we want to hear that feedback. And there's certain sensitivities that you have. You know, want to send it more privately to our legal counsel if you can.
Yeah.
Russ, is there something specific you're solving for?
Uh, this needs to be updated. It's stale. It's not contemporary. And I think there needs to be some changes made to self-reporting for just relationships and financial interests and so forth. I mean, there's just been examples that I've experienced where people are maybe not necessarily 100% transparent in terms of their relationship, maybe with council members or others in commissions. And that is just a one general example. And it can be just going back to example, as you say, I've got the same thing at my job. I have to, every year I have to sign it. I have to do a review. I have to sign that I comply with, with my organization's code of ethics, our standards of conduct, compliance with Medicare rules, et cetera. Of course, it wouldn't apply here, but I think that's a very common sense thing to see that we put into place for the city.
But that's in our code of, that's in our, our ethics statement, that if you have, you know, the, you know, relation conflicts in relationship, we have a duty to disclose. So.
Yeah, I just think that we need to, we need to, I just think we just need to beat this up. I think it's light on some stuff. And I'll talk with the city manager about some concerns that I have. And maybe even talk with Lizzie if she's going to reach out. So.
That's good. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, if there's nothing else, we will move on to.
Logan, yes.
Anymore? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. On anything you'd like to talk about. Christine's good. Anyone online who wishes to speak, public comment? Okay. Uh, we do have a board vacancy under, or, or it's on it's.
Yes, the, I wish Gregory was here to talk about this. There's a
Yeah.
a long-term member of the interurban board has taken a step back and she's completed her service and is ready to pass, pass the torch. So if there's anybody that you know that might be interested in serving on the interurban board, please send them along our way and then we'll work with the interurban director and the mayor to do some interviews and work on filling that spot.
Okay. How long do you, will we have that posted? I know Jamie will post it with, in the email blast and, yeah, so.
Is it October that the term expired? Was it? Okay. So we'll probably at least give it at least a few weeks to see how we're doing with applications and if we have a sufficient pool at that point, then we'll probably move quickly to do interviews and get an appointment. Cause I'm sure they want a full board. So.
Great. Um, okay. Council comments. Let's start with Holly. All right, Russ.
No, I'm tapped out for today. Thanks though.
All set. Thank you.
Okay.
A great holiday weekend. Congratulations to city staff for, once again, just showing the town as a wonderful place for folks to visit. So thank you to staff.
Uh, Logan.
Also.
Okay. Um, with that, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.